Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's 6:03, Monday, September 11th. As usual, we'd like to, certainly offer a public comment concerning any issue that's not on the agenda tonight. We'll keep that up two minutes, so as far as that comment.
Sorry?
I'll just write it up here. Um, I mean, pass these out to you guys, because I've got it all self-contained, because I know I only have two minutes.
Thank you.
And I know that I should have done more about getting on the agenda, but Terry Welch, right here. Do you want one too? Oh, me. And anybody else that wants one, sure, but, okay. Everything is pretty self-explanatory in my letter to you. Um, what I recently found out is that the zoning on my two parcels of property that I own, um, the south end of the town, was arbitrarily changed in 2002 to a P-160 zoning. The reason this was brought to my attention was because I have listed my property for sale, and we've discovered you can't do much with a P-160 zone. So, um, I have a zoning map that points out and shows some of my neighbors who have both zoning, um, RA5 and P-160. Um, I would prefer not to have to go to the expense of doing a survey if I can get my parcels rezoned to the RA5. So, I don't think it would be fair because of what transpired with the county to ask me to bear that expense. But I have, um, attached to your little packets, different ordinances from Daniel. One that I would like to point out to you is the page that says Daniel Ordinance 2008-03-03D, where it's 8.02.03 zoning establishment. At the bottom, I've highlighted where it says, "With a view to conserving property values." When Wasatch County switched my zoning to a P-160, they totally devalued my property. I do not want to put a gravel pit out there. That's one of the uses for the P-160. Um, and I know that I am past the time that I can properly apply for that zone change, so I am asking the council if they would help me with this. Um, there is, at the back of the packet, a letter, an email that I got from Travis Mayer, who's the planner with Wasatch County, excuse me, Travis here, indicating when and how this change was changed. It was arbitrary. I didn't receive any notice, and I don't know exactly what I'm going to do with my property, but I'm limited dramatically by this, so.
So if I understand what you're saying, you passed the date that you don't change applications. You're looking for the council, but you do have the authority to look at something outside that time zone. Um, the survey will be up to you, I would think, I don't know if it's necessary. We probably already have a plot of your property, plots, as far as that goes. Um, and as far as that, if you're looking at five acre lots, you know, up the mountain, all the mountain, just the flats.
I don't even know, I don't even know if Mayor, if I'm going to do that. I just know that right now, I can't do anyone.
You don't have your files, and that's it?
That's all. That's all. Um, one of the potential buyers that was looking at it wanted to put just a caretaker cottage for their buddy on the 32 acres, and because it's P-160, they couldn't even do that. So, um, I just know that this particular issue dramatically affects me. I don't think it will be a problem for my neighbors, because they're all kind of the same thing. RA5 and P-160 as well. If you have any questions for me, or if you can give me any indication of how you would like me to proceed, I'd be happy to comply. I just need to know what. Oh, yes. Sorry, I meant to outline that. It's right here. These two parcels right there.
So for right now, the two minutes of comment period, does it count? Would the council like, want to be able to look and think about this a little more, and then see if we can move this situation forward, or would I like some comments from the council?
Any other questions for me to?
So, when you said this is an agenda item, we talked about it as an agenda item on the.
And that's what we were talking about, we were talking about an agenda for.
According to the last page, according to Mr. Herr's email, he said it was zone grazing before, which would have allowed me to put a caretaker's cottage on that 32 acre parcel. But when they made it into P-160.
So do you want to resort to that, or what are you trying to?
Pardon me? No, I would like, I would like the two parcels to be zoned RA5. Consistent with what's zoned around me.
With that being said, I think it could be an agenda item for next month. Let's try to take this comment period, and we'll be able to discuss this more deeply. If I have anything else you might want to add or not add, or any of your packets, that council's likely.
Or if you have any questions, my phone number is at the top, um, on the letter, cover letter. Do you have any questions, or anything, you can feel free to call me anytime. It is possible that I might have Germany here. He has a power of attorney for me next month to proceed with it.
Lucky.
So it's like, don't make me do it. So anyway, but, but if we can put it on agenda, is there anything else I need to do to put it on the agenda?
I would think that we'll be able to fully discuss it, then we're probably going to send it to the planning. We're going to discuss it, accept that way.
Because it does say, according to, um, 8, um, 802.5, that it can be initiated by either the Planning Commission or the Town Council.
So we're going to put it on the agenda and see what happens?
Go for it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment that is not on the agenda? Great. Item number two. Chairwoman's in a motion to get out of, excuse me, a meeting and go into public hearing. So moved. Here are first. Here are the second. Any discussion? Is it all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. This public hearing is a rezon at 1822 West, 3000 South, and Daniels from RA5 to commercial. So I'll open it up to first comment. Anyone would like to make any comment with regards to this issue?
I'd like to know for what reason. I'm next door.
You can state your name, and for the record, and.
Sorry.
No, no problem. And we'd like to come up, just so everyone can hear you, if you can, if not.
I just had oral surgery, so I can hardly talk.
I, you're fine, Steve.
Lori Klenk, K-L-E-N-K. I mean, I live next door. I'd like to know what the plan is for the reason they want to change it.
An applicant's here, so I guess you'd probably be able to answer that, or?
Absolutely. We're looking at following the general plan of the town and rezoning to commercial along the highway corridors, which is where my property lies, and so it doesn't impact the town itself. It's on the edge of the town, and so that's written into the general plan, so that's why we're applying to change it to commercial.
Is there an end state? What's your end state?
What's that?
What's your end state?
My end state?
Yeah.
I don't have an end state. I'm not at that stage.
You're just ahead of your plan.
Yeah, we're just at the start of this.
So it could be for anything.
Anything in the commercial, all those items that are allowed in the commercial zone, could be for any one of those.
Upstream.
You have a few more questions? I mean, yeah, we, what do you want to?
Everybody, any question you might have?
I really don't know what the answer is. I mean, I'm sure he has a plan of what he wants to do. It's pretty ugly over there right now.
Well, we're looking at a zone change, and I understand, uh, there's, do you know what I said? Have you looked at what can be in the commercial zone by chance, as far as that?
No, I couldn't find that.
It's on, it's on our webpage, as far as what can be approved, and what conditional use might also be there. But as far as Eric's saying, he, the plan is to have those lots commercial. He's saying that he doesn't have any one particular plan that he's got set out yet, I think that's what you're saying?
Yes.
So.
Well, there's really no reason to go to concept approval and spend the money on a concept until you find out if you can be zoned commercial. Otherwise, you spend all the money on a concept, and you're just sitting. So you come to the zone, see if you can be made commercial, if that property is available to be made commercial, and then you look at your, what you want to do with the property in commercial zone.
And I think, as you kind of mentioned, there's an awful lot, this is the beginning, there's an awful lot of, uh, concepts that have to be approved by planning, have to be approved all the way through the line and things. And so this particular meeting isn't necessary by law. We have to have a public hearing and have everyone's input, that whether you're here tonight, or we get letters, we'll take all that input. But certainly you have a right to apply for it, and it does follow the plan.
So there would be more meetings that we could all come to, to?
This will be the only public hearing with regards to this issue, but, hold on. But you certainly, it's going to be, they're all public meetings, and you would still be able to be involved and talk. This is just a legality that we need to have for the public, but if you pay attention, and you come to the meetings, that this is on the agenda, both planning and/or council, you'd be able to know exactly the steps that were taken to either go with it or not go with it. So there's no vote for it tonight, this public hearing, taking input only.
Okay.
You're welcome to all meetings. Everybody in the house, welcome to all the meetings.
We've always handled all public meetings that, you know, most people, I don't know when the time that we have, let someone speak, you know, maybe something said 10 times by 10 people, we might not want to hear it 20 more times, if it's the same thing, but other than that, we always invite the public and want their input. So this is a legal official thing, but we're still going to take input as the process moves forward, and especially if it goes to planning, they'll be taking input at the planning meeting.
So Jordan Russell, I'm also a neighbor of Eric's. Most of the maps that I see for zoning and stuff, even on the website and everything else, cuts my, cuts my piece of property out, cuts her property out, cuts yours out. What is your neighbor's?
You're looking for, yeah, I'm not quite following you, and it cuts it out, cuts it out.
It's not on the map.
Your properties aren't even on the maps?
For zoning.
They're zoning, okay.
We don't exist. We can do what we want.
There it is, and because there's so many different maps, and they're updated all the time, the official zoning map is the one that's held in the planning office or at the engineer's office that is signed by the mayor, and I can assure you, you're not wrong.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it would be someone. But what is, what is that, that guy that's riding between you and the corner, what is his zone?
Uh, there is just me and the corner, so he's on RA5.
Yeah, he owns all the, all the way to their fence, the guy that was putting the gas station.
I'm the second, I'm the second lot. That whole triangle is owned by the same person.
Okay.
Out on the highway corridor, and then up 3000.
So you'd be right in the middle of an air, two RA5s and a commercial, but right across from another commercials?
From industrial.
Industrial.
There's industrial crossroad, and then, of course, we back up to the airport.
Yeah.
Airport is owned for Hebrew City.
Terry Welch again. I was just wondering, does Terry want to still own that corner piece?
You know, I don't.
Because at one point, he was talking about putting a commercial building on that.
You know, I talked to him two weeks ago. He came in and talked to me, not about anything in terms of wood, and I kind of talked about that. He was commercial, we had driven to commercial. His concept didn't plan out, and then he went back to residential. We have already made that particular one commercial at one point. It's not.
That's what I wondered, if you already had commercial next to you, so.
It was at one point, and now it's not, but it probably very well could be when things.
Okay, start moving again, but he still owns it?
He didn't say he didn't own it, and I assumed he did, because we talked about it, but I didn't ask him if he still owned it, so.
I just thought if there was already green there, it was just lowing.
Any other comments?
This, this plan that was talked about, the planning for the city and stuff, where can you find that?
The general plan?
The general plan, yeah.
That's also on the website?
It's on the website. So I'm assuming that my property and her property and your property are all part of that same plan?
Yeah, it's covered in that bill.
I mean, as far as the commercial side, all of those ones that you were talking about turning to commercial eventually?
Well, it just says highway corridors, so things along the highway corridor, we have all, of course, Highway 40, and then 189.
What's the easement on that?
Uh, we just got a new one, so I'm unfamiliar with how big it is. We just signed an interloble agreement with UDOT, and they would widen that out with some restrictions on above, above ground, uh, structures, above ground structures are required to be set by. There are certain areas that will not have any structure whatsoever, that have structures on them now, that if the airport were to come in, they're gone, and it goes into county property, it goes with the highway a little bit, it goes, takes quite a bit of arc, move down.
Right.
Is there any other hand? Do you have a hand now?
No.
Any other questions? Comments? Counsel? Questions? Well, if there's no more further questions, Chairwoman's in a motion to get out of public hearing and go back into regular session. We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Not? All in favor? Aye. It's being closed. Opened up. We're back in a general meeting. So moved. First. Second. All in favor? Aye, we're back in regular session. Item number three. Lieutenant Russell, speaking on property at 16 East West, 3000 South.
Just quickly, before we leave that, we'd probably tell these folks where that application's headed.
Which one?
The zone change.
Okay.
So that will now go back to planning, and then it will get, come back to council with a recommendation. And so if this does the public hearing portion of it, now it'll go to planning, then it will come back with a recommendation to council, and that's when the council will go.
And I do recommend that if anyone's interested, be at all these meetings. It's easy to be, I don't know if it's going to be two, or three, or four, but it may be continued, it may not be continued, but if some has interest, we love, more folks, the better, so.
And the agendas are posted on the website also?
Yep.
So if it's not on the agenda, we'd love for you to still come, but you don't need to.
And Lynn, just for the record, it's placed in three areas, the paper, the webpage.
And the public notice website.
The public.
And the what?
Public notice website.
Oh.
Except the state.
The state website.
Anything else there?
No, I just thought that they might want to know where it is.
Now we'll go to item number three. I wonder if you'd like to come up? I know you've already talked, but you still introduce an item for this particular session? It's about like, I get a lot later. Big time minutes.
I'm Jordan Russell. I live at six, my address is on the paper. Um, I put in a permit to put up a loafing shed back in my backfield, and was denied for reasons concerning a business that I thought were taken care of in the last meeting that I came to.
I could probably answer that for about the last year, so you're looking at me, I'll answer. So we had, my understanding, you certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but probably close, not quite. He came in and we talked about two different businesses. We had a dumpster business and a mushroom business.
Yeah.
And did the mushroom business for a while, if not a few weeks or whatever. But we had dumpster more or less coming and going in there. And so that kind of threw some people off with regards, is there a dumpster business and not a mushroom business? Is there two businesses, but we're not licensed, but we have a dumpster business?
So they're both licensed.
Okay.
All of the dumpsters, that's all personal property. That's signed under my name, not a business name. So that's considered personal property, and where I store it is personal. The, both businesses have been licensed with the state and are operated under Wasatch County. And that was what we were discussing last time in the last meeting, was Daniel building her, uh, her house? Building license, or Daniel licenses?
Okay.
And never came to a conclusion. We haven't heard anything. We haven't been sent notice. We haven't been anything, so.
Just before, as we're talking, we've got three more paragraphs, and we will be done with that. So it's taken 11 months. That's why you haven't heard?
Got it.
That's why you haven't heard. Um, so tonight, as you may have, we have an ag building, and I guess probably want to know that it's not going to. So I'm not quite clear, if you have a business that's personal property, that you use it for a business, then possibly the town's idea is probably a business, whether it's registered under your name or not. It's being used commercially, you're taking dumpsters to a job site.
I can see the gray line.
Yeah, and so, and we can too, and so that's kind of why we want to have some clarity before we move forward.
Sure. That business is also, so a mushroom business. Just for a quick statement, though, I don't know what this has to do with an agricultural building, but.
Because maybe that gets, somebody gets to know the business that we weren't either aware of, or it'd be unseen, or something. So the ag building, you might say an ag building right now, but the plan might come out and might not, like, looks like an ag. I don't know.
I've seen plans, yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing, I'm just saying we have some issues that we wanted to clarify before we issued that permit.
Okay.
That's, that's the essence of it.
All right, so the mushroom business is moved to another location. It's growing, so it had need for.
Growing mushrooms.
Growing mushrooms. It's a growing business. Oh, yeah. And then the dumpster business is also being operated out of another location, and these are just being stored because they're my part of the investment into the company, but they're signed under my personal name, like, they have no DBA, they're not part of any DBA or anything like that. Um, so for the time, they are being parked and stored at my place. The only time that they're really there is during winter time, when it slows down. For the majority of the time, there's only three dumpsters, four dumpsters there at a time, and one of those I use for my personal use, so.
How many of these dumpsters are just regular?
Backdown cages.
Yeah, like diamond cases.
Okay.
Just for construction.
Just not the 30, not the 30 footers, it's the?
They're the 20s, 20 footers, by, by like 8 feet off.
Okay.
So that, that in itself is probably an issue. I know you keep saying personal property, I kind of get that, but if it's going out your house and sort of jobs.
If we go down this road, that goes down a whole other avenue of, who's got a military truck at their house? Who's got a tractor?
Yep. That's why it's taken us 11 months to get there, over time to get there. So I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I'm just saying that, you know, we've been working on that side of things, to make it somewhere in the middle, and you may or may not be in the middle as far as the dumpsters standing there or not, but we have finished that document yet. That's a concern, that's, that's.
True, and I understand, nothing's been out since, so when I came to that, we talked about it.
I appreciate you coming tonight, because I know that it's been a long time, and we want to move forward.
Counsel, congratulations, your mushroom business is growing.
Did you understand why I couldn't issue the permit? Why GD not?
Yeah, she sent me a big.
Okay, because we'd sent a letter, asked you to come in, and then you didn't come. These guys, these guys would fire me if I issued you a permit, knowing that you didn't come talk to them.
I don't know where that letter ended up. You guys just walked around here.
It has to go through the mouth.
Paper trail.
That's the hearing trail.
Okay, first, does counsel have any other questions? Want to wait till the document's done, and then I'll speak for itself?
It'll help.
Are you clear where you're at, and what you need to do, and all of that, when we have questions?
I've put in a permit for the, for an ag building, which is 800 square feet. Got denied because of this. There was a question about the businesses that are going on there. So where am I at with that? Do I need to just put in four 200 square foot buildings, or can I go ahead and put in 800 square foot single building?
Well, it, uh, you know, that's going to be discussed as it moves forward, you know, it's not going to stay dead.
I don't want my horses out in the rain.
Are you parking your tractor in there?
If I have one.
And I want to understand that your businesses have been moved from this property, or are they on this property?
One of the businesses has been moved from the property. Well, both of the businesses don't, neither business operates on the property.
But he has dumpsters.
There's no, all the dumpsters.
Yeah, that's another.
Where you have a problem with the dumpsters, where, where, one more.
So my question.
Where do I put them, right?
My question is, so this loafing shed, does it have any attachment whatsoever? I mean, are dumpsters going in it, or is it just?
No, it's definitely not big enough for dumpsters.
So it's just the horses?
It's, I've got one section for my horses, and I've got horse, or section for my hay storage, and I've got a section for implements and tractors.
No bedrooms, no power?
No power, no bedrooms, no some of that, no.
So does it be a setback for a building that's housing animals?
It's completely set up for agricultural purposes, even if it qualifies for a labor.
Okay, but like in this town, you have to be so many hundred feet from any structure?
Right.
And are you far enough out that that qualifies?
Right. It's set right in the middle of my problem.
I didn't review it. I just, I just didn't issue it. It says, wait.
My question's been answered. Counsel does or doesn't have any more questions?
It's been one question.
So there's, I'm sure, sure it'd be as far as your act.
Okay, so your instructions to me is to move forward with the permit, well?
Before winter, I hope.
Yeah, we can.
It's part of the ag building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Cut in for a permit, right?
And that's completely different in the business for me to see why.
And I, after explaining to me, it does seem totally different that it can't, it doesn't seem like an ag building to me, how he described it.
No, I'm still listening, sir, keep going.
I'll get to Eric, yeah, I'll be your instructions. Okay, move forward. Everything moving forward. Okay. Fantastic. That was easy. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, move on to number four. Adoption Resolution DR-217-09-11A, canceling municipal election for mayor and two council members on November 7th, 2017. I'm not going to need a lot of discussion about it, but I, certainly take some discussion before I ask for a motion.
Are you saying that nobody else wants their jobs?
I'd say it's too late if they did.
There, at the time when the deadline filed, there was one person for each seat, so thereby the town did not have to have to go through the regular election process, because it was not any, a second person for any seat. So thereby, we don't have to go to the expense and the headaches of having an election in the town. If there was a person, we would have a second person in a seat, we would have an election.
So you stay in there?
For more years if that's right.
So you're.
Are you sure?
Motion to approve.
So Chair Will and if Will had a motion to approve, and?
Motion to approve DR 2017-09-11A, canceling the election.
You ready to second? Second. Ready to second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Let me read the resolution, and then I can take care of this. Short title resolution for cancellation of Daniel's municipal election 2017. Purpose to cancel the election scheduled for November 7th, 2017, in town of Daniel, and certification and candidates. Resolution, whereas. of Daniel and certification and candidates. Resolution, whereas the Daniel Town Council as the duly elected legislative body of the town of Daniel does hereby wish to assert its authority granted under Utah State Code twenty-eight dash one dash two oh six, to cancel a local election if all municipal offices are elected at large, the number of municipal officer candidates does not exceed the number of open at large municipal offices, offices for which candidates have filed. There have been no writ writing candidates filing for candidacy as the headline made. Each municipal officer candidate is unopposed, and there are no other municipal valid oppositions or propositions. Daniel Town Council does hereby declare that all of the above considerations have been met and resolved to cancel the municipal election scheduled for November seventh, two thousand and seventeen. This declaration is no later than twenty days before the day of the scheduled election as required by state statute. Daniel Town Council does hereby certify that Lance Chip Turner, having filed as an unopposed candidate for the seat of mayor to be elected on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, is, excuse me, mayor to be elected on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, is elected to office for a four-year term to begin January two thousand and eighteen. Daniel Town Council does hereby certify that John A. Ladowski and Stephanie Grady, having lawfully filed as unopposed candidates for two seats of the Daniel Town Council to be elected on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, are elected to office for a four-year term to begin January two thousand and eighteen. Further, proper notice of the cancellation of the election shall be given as required by UCA twenty-eight dash one dash two oh six two. I was signing that. Take care of item number four. I'm going out of number five, business licenses.
We have no new or renewals this month.
Okay, first, that's almost the first, isn't it?
I think we had that last one, too.
Yeah, that's probably, usually have something, okay? The next item is pretty standard, a gagrant letter with Ben Pope, Gilbert and Stewart to perform fiscal.
Missed item six, yes.
Oh, check, I'm sorry. Discussion of Bureau of Reclamation programmatic agreement. I will put aside the pen over there.
So I emailed this out, everybody had a copy, and if they have a chance to review that, are we ready to sign on, or does the council feel? We've been to a lot of meetings about it. We've put in a lot of public comment. Do you want the short version of what it is?
I remember reading, I remember saying that you did, you did or didn't have to end it, but probably that's to be my.
Get stuff to the council if they want to support this or not.
Not really the supporting role. If there's no negative to us, if we don't sign, there's no anything, it's just a supporting role, right?
That's correct. That's correct. What a programmatic agreement is, it allows, as some of these canals and ditches get filled in around the state, you remember what happened up in Logan that cost some lives, and so there've been some canal failures, and so they want to come in and pipe those. Well, if the Bureau of Reclamation's involved, and several other federal entities are involved with this, and cities want to get this done, there's been no fast-track way to come in and, and enclose these canals. And of course, you guys just have one up in your neighborhood to go with it. They had to go through the entire process, through the studies, through the EA, environmental assessment, has to go through all of this before you can even start on this, on the project. So, what the Bureau of Reclamation brought everybody together to make an agreement that they could fast-track it under certain conditions, and that there's no significant, no historical significance, there's no, there's about five different criteria, and one of them is the endangered species. There's just those things that throw up the red flag. And so if, if none of those things exist, this fast-tracks it so that the municipalities, the irrigation companies, really any entity would be able to fast-track along to get the permit. Chippewa is a big player in this, and that just allows it to go fast. That's a quick version.
Talking a lot of go fast as in permits, dollars, and/or just the whole process.
As in pull the permit, as to get the, get the actual pipe in the ground a lot faster. It'll more than cut the time in half.
So it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of negatives in this particular thing from the state?
Well, I don't know. As a municipality, sometimes you want it to go through that process to make sure that everything's covered. If, if maybe there's something that you, as a municipality, if we had an issue with something, we wouldn't want it to go through that. You know, if, if we'd want it to go slow, so they're addressing those concerns. You remember when Storm Havens went in? I sent in a letter because we was out of time and had some issues that they had to address.
So it's a glass apple, and you're going to know whose day you're looking at?
That's correct. The good news is that they called me and asked me to be a part of this agreement as they built it. So, a lot of those items were brought up as it was built, so.
But if we don't sign, it probably will or won't be involved, maybe?
Won't be invited.
Oh, yeah. They like me.
We don't really have any open canals anymore in Daniels.
That last one got filled. I mean, is there any other, I mean, there's?
We have, we have some ditches, and different things, and any of the irrigation companies. Yeah. Little Sweden ditch, I mean, we just have some, we do have some areas that, I mean, FEMA, we're not going to get any funds from FEMA for forever, so that's out the window. So if you're looking for FEMA money to do the study, that's not going to happen. Yeah, they're pretty much tapped out. So this was just a process, and I applaud Bureau of Reclamation for doing this, to help the entities move through that process. There's, as long as it meets the criteria, when that, when that project started, it was all in private ground, but by the time that it came to the commentary, we owned part of that property. So that was one of the items that we wrote in. They had to address all of our concerns before that project was able to move forward. But, you know, I think it's a good thing, but.
If we have concerns on a future project, they're still going to be, be addressed.
Well, it fast-tracks us, so it takes out some of those hearings, and so it does fast-track it.
Yeah, but we're still bringing them up.
We still bring them up, and that, and that, if you're part of that agreement, then that's definitely a plus for that.
That would be part of the.
We spent quite a few hours down there at their offices, and following webinars back and forth. But it's totally up to the council if they want to support that or not. I can see both sides, so.
Yeah, I think we have support at this point.
I'm very intro- anyway. I mean, trying to get at the negative, I'm not really seeing it, except for, I mean, we've got one canal that has got, like, cut in, and we've got a few other ditches that run seasonally. Probably, I guess, uh? Chair willing to take a motion with regards to the Bureau of Reclamation?
It would've been nice to have the irrigation as a part of it.
Irrigation.
Danny Irrigation. They were invited to the meeting, but they didn't come. You've probably seen the list of people that was invited, and tribes, tribes and people, I mean, every municipality and all the tribes, and there is a huge list.
But how many showed?
Eleven. But Daniel was there.
Okay, so do we have a motion for signing on to the Reclamation problematic agreement?
So if you sign on to that, who, who comes in and decides, like a little Sweden stream, who decides if that's going to be made into a pipe and not open water?
I think that.
Even though it's seasonal, I mean.
I believe that ditch is owned by the irrigation company, Naomi's Manon. So I would imagine that they would be petitioning to bite that. That's how the other one worked up above. They actually applied for the grant to bite the other one. They're bonded, I don't know if it's a bill or a bond, I don't know if it was close to that.
Both.
Both, okay. So I think the irrigation company's petition, because they own, La Satch and the temp canal here in the valley is already owned by the Bureau of Reclamation, so.
I think, have they started up on the other end doing some?
So I think, I think it's up to them to petition to start the process.
And the Storm Haven canal? Would that be part of that?
It would, it would be the same type of process, so that one's already done, but that would be the same process, that type of a deal.
Well, the upper one's done, we have the lower one also, which is quite a bit bigger. Well, the lower one's an apple stream, that would be.
Yeah.
That wouldn't qualify under any of this.
Wouldn't qualify. Good. That's what my question was.
Well, and it wouldn't have qualified anyway, because there was a raptor bird nesting in, up in your area, that they had to, they had to work around that schedule as that was piped in, so.
When you went out each morning and put some air in?
Yeah.
So if anything like that appears, then that stops this process and has to go through the whole thing.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, if it's fast-track, it looks simple, Chippewa buys in, they just push it forward.
Great.
Okay, you did have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion? On favor? Aye. Any opposed? I think we are on to number seven then, aren't we? Engagement with Ben Pope, Gilbert and Stewart for performing fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, seventeen audit. As far as that audit goes, we have, then as we had discussion, we believe we're able to go back to that thirty-five hundred for the audit versus the five thousand, because we'll be under that dollar figure, and so that's what we're anticipating as if our discussion is now, with regards to the cost of that audit. Chair willing to take a motion with regards to accepting that, having them, they're all for. Motion, we have a second?
Second.
The motion, a second and a discussion.
Yeah, is that motion for the five thousand?
For the thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
He's got the engagement letter that states we should qualify for the agree-upon procedure this year. Last year, we would have but for the acquisition of the Storm Haven.
I'm, but I wonder, is it, we need to go up to, so we don't have to revisit this, if it goes over thirty?
So it's, it's a dollar.
It's a much more, how much is it if we don't bump it? Last year wasn't it a lot more?
Five, fifty-five hundred.
So we want to go to five, we want to go to?
Just make the engagement. That's true, we want to put the, we just make the engagement letter roll.
Okay, so we have, we had a first, a second, we had discussion, I think you had a vote, didn't you? Nope?
No, no, you, you want another motion, do you not reword it?
No, I think they're just going to leave that.
He clarified if it said thirty-five or not, I read that it was, but. You going to have another motion or not? Same as your original? Okay, I said your second? You have a first and a second, any other discussion? If not, on favor? Aye? Any opposed? Let Ben know that you're on. Let's move on to number eight, municipal water issues is necessary.
It's hammer, right? And the municipal side?
The road going into the pump house, it had about three feet of weeds on it, and it was really quite a fire hazard. Truck rolls in there with the catalytic converters and things on, so. I took the liver and I take my horse there cleaning it off. Not a big problem.
Was it almost fun?
Pardon me?
Was it almost fun?
Yeah, it was almost fun. On the other side of the water issues, we're not getting a lot of the water, green, fat. There's, there's still a third of the people in the town that has not signed that agreement or forced it back. And I'm just getting some thoughts from the council as to how serious that is, or whether it's not serious.
My understanding was it was more of an educational thing, but if we had to do something, we had to do something, but it'd be up to the property line on our side, and I know we've got to inspect if we needed to, and that was, roughed all the feathers, and it really helped the customer, but they don't look at it that way, so, I guess that's a comment, not really.
Well, there are some legal issues when it comes to collecting money. David, the town attorney, I can't remember his last name.
Art Dixon.
Pardon me?
Art Dixon. Let's call him David.
I spoke with him, and he says without an agreement, a signed agreement from customers, it's really hard to collect legal fees.
As in, we had to take them, because they had a delinquency with us, and we tried to collect that delinquency?
Yeah.
So thereby, we couldn't collect any fees that we might incur to try to collect?
Right. And it's also illegal to turn that person, the person who takes title to that property, if, if there's a sale of the property, it's illegal to charge of that person or entity for the back fees to acquire property on it?
That was just, that's, isn't that new?
I don't, I don't believe it is.
No, that's not new. You can't turn for a service you don't get.
But if we had the property in, it's something that had.
If you lean it, that's a different story. If we're just applying.
Well, that's where all this is going. If, if you lean the property, and they go to close on it through a title company, it's a matter of record. And at that point in time, you usually get paid, and your attorney can get handed.
And probably the water bill at that stage might be four, five, six, whatever. I mean, normally we haven't had big, big dollar water amounts, we've had to.
But what has happened, one time that I'm aware of, is that the property was closed on, there was no record of an interest for the town of Daniel or the water company. Therefore, it didn't get paid, and it won't get paid. And we've got three or four other customers out there, and they're in the same situation. They've left town, the banks were closed, and if it's a local title company, it usually has been a common courtesy to those title companies, if they were called the town of Daniel, and say, do we have money to hold on this property? But if the closing is in New York or California, and you're not on record, you're, you're done. Now, I wouldn't even bring this issue up, except the customer that pays the bill is going to get hurt, because all of a sudden, we're having these delinquencies, and we're losing money, and that means the rates have to go up. So, I, I think the council needs to, that give us some direction, and see what they want to do.
Now, is this a lien, like a mechanic's lien, understand it has to be renewed every so, you know, ninety days or whatever it is, it's terrible for the contractor as far as things go, because of the paperwork they have to deal with. Would you know the process that a municipality has to do a lien on a property for that?
I was, I thought that a mechanic's lien was good for two years.
And they changed it. That's the last thing I remember, was they fucked it, so we had to stay on top of it, and no one did, and so it was a problem for the builder.
Well, now it's even changed to where the builder has to do it before they even start work.
There you go. So they just get, put a guesstimate of dollars on that lien?
No, it's just a pre-lien notification.
But they still have to have a guesstimation amount and all that?
No.
Nope?
It's just registering your supplying product or labor. I don't believe the municipality of the town of Daniel would have to do a pre-lien, but I'm not sure. Another thing that'd be handy, I think, I don't think you want to deal with the attorney that's in Salt Lake. Filing a mechanic's lien has legal issues, but, you know, in the legal scale, it's not really up there. And it'd be nice to have somebody who can walk from their office to the. And it'd be nice to have somebody who can walk from their office to the county courthouse, or excuse me, the recordings office, and file a lien. And it'd be nice to have one released, and it'd be nice to deal with all the title companies. That's something to consider. I really don't know, you know, this, this problem hasn't been a big one, but it looks like to me it's going to escalate quite a bit in the next few days. And it's important, I think, for the customers that are paying on funding, that we protect their interests somewhat.
I agree. Is that something that council ought to make an agenda item so we can maybe have further discussion as far as that? Could you maybe look up what it does take for a municipality, whatever type of lien it would take?
I don't know what you said.
You have some application.
Yeah, I don't know if I would answer that besides David, David might be quicker, I could ask him, so.
It might be in the recorder's office, too. Well, you know, it was kind of a surprise to the people in the water department that you really could, when someone sells a property and there's a bill owing, pretty simply just don't turn the water on until you get paid, you know, so that was a surprise.
Not anymore?
Not anymore. Do I want to get involved in that?
Got that answered, it's okay. I mean, as few times as we do, we just need to have information and myself or a clerk to do it, but we're not going to probably have very many, but we're probably going to have some like you anticipate.
We've got two properties now that have been in for closure for quite a while, and I, you know, I don't know when they'll be sold or what's going to happen, but we really should have an attorney because you can get paid, you can get your fees covered, if that person has a signed contract with the town, so they're signed agreement. Seventy percent, no, excuse me, seventy property owners of two hundred and eight have not sent that agreement.
Is there, at this point, since it's been, what, a year, two years, year and a half?
Two years.
And out of those seventy?
Go ahead, set the first one down. Maybe they're all on now.
So out of that, two years, out of those seventy people, have they been bumped multiple times about that agreement, or they just haven't done?
Three or four times in the market.
Okay, so they all have been bumped?
See, there's another legal question.
Can you keep asking?
They can say, well, I never seen that, and we can say, well, you paid your water bill, and it was in with the bill, and the judge would say, okay, I've heard enough of that, four times you sent a bill, you know. I don't know where it's going to go, I don't know what to tell you, I'm just trying to put the problems out there. I really think it's the point where maybe we should get an attorney involved.
Or certify.
Show us the process of what you can protect our town, send some customers into this town, money.
Of course.
Yeah. But with the consideration of not having some big attorney out of Salt Lake or down in Mobile, just, that's just my personal opinion.
We have a lot of people defaulting on their water bills in Daniels?
We have a lot of people defaulting on their water bills in Daniels?
There's usually about ten to fifteen that we have to turn water off on.
A boat?
No, that would be in three months, very important. The council has told the water department to collect that money every sixty days, and we're not too good at that. We try, but we're not too good.
That's why we have to see this.
Yeah, let's call it over. We can discuss this.
A lot of next month and chew that out and get it right.
The last one, we had a property that did not have any water, it was in the Storm Haven, and we really didn't suspect any of the town lines or the water meter, so the suggestion was made that they check their pressure regulator, because they have a screen in them. They hired a plumber, found out they didn't have a pressure regulator, and so at that point, we did remove the water meter, and we found moss and roots had entered the meter. And that tells me we've got now a problem with trees and roots, and if they start to move through the culinary system, I don't know whose meter they'll go to next when they break loose. And I think the only cure for that, well, there's a couple of ways to look at it, but one of the first things that might have to take place is the system being chlorinated.
Is it a blast to clean, or kind of keep it there for a while, or?
Well, what happens when there's material in the water system like that, it's usually the person or house that takes the first big blast, first big flow, you fill your cover, and the launch sprinklers come on, and that's where that moss and root go to clock their meter. So is it a big problem right now? Probably not, but I anticipate that we might be in that area over the next year, changing out two to three meters, or cleaning out, excuse me, two to three meters.
Chlorine works on back time, so it wouldn't be a blast of chlorine, you'd have to put it in system.
Just strengthen it up and.
Yeah, you'd have to put it in system.
And then I should note that everyone in the Storm Haven area that I've ever collected is totally against chlorine.
I've read the study.
Just like most of the people in Town of Daniel. That's going to a community subject taken.
Eighteen of them.
Well, once we put those in, we're going to need to add more bugs, more yeast.
Okay. That takes care of the Daniel municipal, there's no Storm Haven, is there anything additional to Storm Haven that we need to talk about?
I'm really happy to see all the Storm Haven people here tonight, crazy and scandalous. I'm thinking they're here for some public comment.
Well, we're going to go down the list? Okay. Okay, yeah, municipal's checked off, Storm Haven water item checked off, okay?
Not checked off, we're down to item eight.
Nine. Storm Haven water items, we had a discussion of Storm Haven water and sewer rates, adoption of resolution DR-217-09-11D, setting the new rate. So last month, we kind of talked about the sewer, and we're going to finish that up, and Ryan, do you have anything else for us with regards to that or not?
I think Ken covered it in a lot of report as far as the sewer, to my knowledge, it's been fairly quiet the last couple of months.
Yes.
I don't know that it'll stay that way, but the last couple of months, it's back to the water issues.
I'd ask, we do have a lot of those folks there, I mean, is the water and sewer, and does anybody have any problems that anyone's heard of?
None.
Same old same, it's all working.
Roddy, did you want to address this?
We can't. We did receive, we received that letter, and then is that the, is that the first or the second letter?
This is the first.
This is the first letter? So we did have a number of positive bacteria results, which might be the result of moss in the system. We tried very hard to explain those as a sampling error, but having a hard time with the moss, following those sampling errors, which we had enough that it caused the state to come up and do an inspection. In their inspection, they have a laundry list of things that we need to do to make the system better, but they were, at the time, we believed that we were unaware of the moss, and so we were able, correctly or otherwise, we thought it was a sampling issue, and so we corrected our sampling problem, and they went away with, if we sample differently, it'll probably be okay. But there are some things, a vent on the tank, a screen, a vent night seal around the well, a number of little issues that they want taken care of in the next sixty days. And then the biggest one is they sent a second letter that puts us over our points where the EPA gets involved unless we can get an operating permit for the well. We've never had an operating permit for the well.